Thank you. All right, well, thank you for being here this evening. Thank you for those who are at home watching. We are going to go over the five-year forecast today. Just before we get started, though, just so everybody knows who's at home, the five-year forecast is available in Word docs, which is the online system that we utilize for the board meetings in particular. So there's a lot more detail on those. It goes through every single line item. So if there's more information that you're looking for, that's where you can look for it. As always, you can always contact me. Be more than happy to talk about the details. But we'll look at some of the high-level details with the forecast this evening. First, before we just jump in, just a little bit of background on what a five-year forecast is. The five-year forecast is approved twice a year. It's in May and November. Although it is something that is required by the state of Ohio, it's something that we utilize on a regular basis when we look at future planning and looking forward in the future as to what we're doing in the buildings and even when we're looking at some of the financial needs in the districts. There's a lot of different variables that we utilize within our planning. And yeah, it's something that I look at on a very, very regular basis. November typically is more of a kickoff for the year. It used to be actually October. The law changed recently that it's approved in November. And it's more of a kickoff to look at what that year is, what we're doing that year and the year's future. May is typically kind of just a look back and a brief look into the future. If you've been paying attention to funding in the state of Ohio, a lot of things have changed recently. And so it's gonna be a little bit of a different conversation, but we're gonna hop in here. So tonight's agenda, what we're gonna look at is fiscal year 2020 update, fiscal year 2021 expectations or forecasts, some previous forecast comparisons and cash flow considerations. Before we go to the next slide, just so people at home are aware or even our board members, the fiscal years for schools are July through June. So in reference to fiscal year 2020 update, we are currently in fiscal year 20 and we will be soon finishing up that year and going into fiscal year 2021. All right, so the first that we're gonna look at is our review. So if we look at the review of fiscal year 20, a lot of things have changed. So obviously, our buildings are currently closed with the pandemic and that has changed a little bit of our expenses. So we're gonna look at expenses first. So some of the expenses that we've been able to save are basically based on some of the building closures. So some salary and benefit line items there. We've also been able to, with freeing up some funds within our permanent improvement fund, were able to move over some one-time expenses. And there are some future expenses that will be moved over into the permanent improvement fund. And that's in many ways because of the recent cancellation of high school busing. Just quickly on permanent improvement, a permanent improvement fund is also funded through tax dollars. The intent of the permanent improvement fund is to take care of any assets that we have that are five years or longer. And it's also for any expenses in order to maintain those assets. So there are opportunities within the district. We typically use our permanent improvement fund mainly for capital improvements as Mr. Ames already talked about. Putting in the sidewalk at the high school would be something that's categorized other permanent improvements. So we are able to utilize those funds. We don't always have a balance in that account. This year we do, so we were able to take advantage of some of that extra income to help out the general fund. But it is an account that still is more restricted than our general fund. So there's still expenses that we're not able to actually move over and take advantage of within that fund. So on the expense side, we were able to save roughly a million dollars from our updated February forecast. The district actually updated our forecast in February due to the levy failure in November and some cuts and then also some commitments that the board had made to the community. And we'll talk about those in greater depth further on. On the revenue side, if you have been paying attention as well, the state has actually cut K-12 budgets. Every district was affected differently. It wasn't necessarily a straight percentage for every district. There's a lot of different factors and variables that they utilized. And Love One in particular, we weren't hurt the worst, but we were definitely impacted or affected more than many other districts. So currently, in this fiscal year, so again, we're talking about May and June, the state of Ohio has cut our budget by just over a million dollars. So if you take into the areas that we're able to save expenses versus the revenue loss, we are basically ending the year where we had anticipated in February. You can see on the right-hand side, our cash balance is expected to be just around $100,000 less than what we anticipated in February. I wouldn't like to say that I'm pretty proud of that fact, that we were able to get through this year with some opportunities that we're taking advantage of with current expenses, but then also some of our savings with building closures. So basically, end the year flat. Where the biggest difference comes in is for next year. So this is fiscal year 21 forecasted budget. One thing that I do want to say is, as we've already discussed, is the fact that we do not know exactly what the state is gonna do at this point. As Amy had alluded to, we're in constant conversation with many of our colleagues, with state representatives, with the Ohio Department of Education Budgeting and Finance Department. I am personally on a group, actually two groups within my organization. One's an advocacy group and one is the Ohio Department of Education Finance Advocacy Committee. So we have a lot of individuals that we can speak with and get a better understanding of and really see what our colleagues are doing. So let's just start firstly with the revenue side. We're currently forecasting a decrease of roughly $1.5 million from what we had anticipated in February. This was not anticipated. What we're really looking at here is a few different areas. Mainly is state funding. So at this particular time, I am forecasting a similar cut in state funding as we are seeing currently in this fiscal year. That is what many of my colleagues are doing. And honestly, some of them are being even more conservative on that. I've never, I've not necessarily heard of an instance where they're not at least expecting a similar cut going into fiscal year 21. A couple of other places where we're seeing less income or revenue is our property tax collections. So even though we have levies that are currently being collected in the districts, what we receive is based on actual collections from individuals. We looked back at the recession years as trying to do our best with historical lookback. Surprisingly, in Love One, there was not really that much of a decrease in collections. We typically see about 100% collections. We're seeing about 98.5% to 99% collections during those years. So we have factored that in for at least this upcoming year and the year after. But it's not substantially different than what we've seen, but it does impact the bottom line. The other place that we're seeing it is the district does actually receive money from casino revenue. Casinos have been obviously shut down during this timeframe. So we are currently forecasting that our casino revenue will be basically half of what we anticipated. So that's really, for the most part, was making up that $1.5 million in revenue loss. On the expense side, what we're looking at currently is $1.7 million in savings as to what we expected in February. The difference that we see in fiscal year 21 as opposed to fiscal year 20 is that this is due to, it's in response to the failed levy. So we had a lot of different areas that we were looking to cut. Some of the places that we've talked about so far is our high school busing. So this is lowering our expenses at this point to make the budget more feasible. We also looked during our planning and budgeting stages with all of our departments, looked at ways, other ways to save money. So there are instances where budgets are lower than we had anticipated with the February forecast already and also including those particular cuts. What's important about fiscal year 21 as opposed to fiscal year 20 is when you look at the right-hand side and see that our cash balance is basically $112,000 better than what we had anticipated in February, well, the May forecast shows cuts in expenses and the February forecast was not anticipating, well, we had not factored in those cuts specifically because we did not know what was going to occur with the levy. So although we're seeing roughly flat cash balance, it's not due to, it wasn't supposed to look like that way, basically. Ultimately, the cash balance should have had significant increase as we anticipated our revenue to be the same pre-pandemic. So that's a really important piece to be aware of. We'll look at the future years that, even though it is relatively flat, it does help out the bottom line moving forward. But fiscal year 21 is not flat because of anything we've done at this particular time because of lost revenue. If that makes sense, if you have any questions on that, please let me know. So what we just wanted to look at really quickly was just a comparison of fiscal year 20 to fiscal year 24. So we're looking at the five-year forecast, we're looking at five years of forecasted years. And we really wanted to look at really quickly kind of where we were and where we've come. If you just look at the November 2019 forecast on the left-hand side, it'll show our total revenue and total expenses and what our fiscal year 24 cash balance was anticipated to be at that point in time. It was roughly negative $25 million. When we looked at the February levy, or the February update to the forecast and with the initial reductions in expenses and some additions in revenue, you will see that our final cash balance was roughly about now year's $12 million. And now with the May 2020 forecast update, you're looking at about $6.5 million final cash balance in fiscal year 24. Again, we anticipated that cash balance to be far better than what it is. What you can see on the total revenue side, and this is something that we've discussed many times during the levy season, was our revenue is typically relatively flat. And that's what our expectation would be because of lost revenue from the state and anticipated lost revenue from the state is no longer flat. We're actually losing revenue over what we had anticipated originally. So you're looking at lost revenue of roughly $3 million, but we've also decreased our total expenses from February to about $8.6 million. So all in all, when you look at the full story of where we've come, the district has reduced expenses for forecasted years by roughly $21 million. So one reminder that we wanted to look at was the board commitment. So in February of 20, the board committed to make sure that our expenses were not increasing by more than 3% during the forecasted years. What you can see on the top is our November 2019 forecast where we were previously. So 3.3% to roughly 4.3%. And now you can see the May 20 forecast is showing this current fiscal year is gonna be just below 1% on the general fund. Next year, the bulk of the cuts occur. So you're looking at 0.32% for fiscal year 21 and still maintaining that less than 3% in fiscal years 22 through 24. I just really wanted to highlight the work that the board has done during this time to make sure that we are being fiscally responsible and making sure that we are limiting our costs. So although we've been able to curb costs and bring down that curve, this is showing just our revenue loss. So revenue year over year, you can see in fiscal year 20 and 21, that's the bulk of where we are looking at our anticipated revenue loss. So at this point in time, fiscal year 20, we definitely know what it's going to be. And in fiscal year 21, we're anticipating a significant loss from the state as well. If you look at 22 through 24, the reason why I actually see it go higher in 23 is because with the November failed levy and then the failed levy in March, we actually highlighted some places where we are going to increase revenue. And that's in line with our pay-to-participate fees. So you will see some revenue increase back into the budget. So one important piece that we always want to look at when we're looking at the forecast and then we're also looking at future levies. So this is not necessarily a levy conversation because we'll have much more details in our June meeting. But this is something that's really important and I think it does get lost oftentimes when we're looking at the school budget. So the district attempts to keep roughly two months of expenses, which is approximately $9 million at the end of a forecast for fiscal year. And the purpose of that is really to maintain our current obligations. The district does have uneven cash flow from a revenue standpoint since the bulk of our revenue comes in from the local community. It had been 58%. It's gonna be more than that since the state has cut our budget. Those checks come in twice, basically twice a year. And so you'll see that reflected in the graph. So the red at the top is this current fiscal year. The blue below that is fiscal year 21. And I believe that is purple. I apologize, I'm a little bit colorblind. So if that is wrong, you can correct me. So fiscal year 22 is that bottom line. And you can see really how money comes into the district and how money is spent. So the red line is current actual dollars. And then we're obviously doing some anticipations of May and June. July through June on fiscal years 21 and 22 are based on consistent cash flow or consistent expenses. And then where we anticipate the revenue to come in. So what you can see in January of 22, what's really important is as we're trying to maintain a cash balance, the balance gets to roughly about $2.6, $2.7 million at the end of January of 22 without increased revenue and making sure that our expenses are where they are. If we do not receive, we typically do not receive our state revenue, or I'm sorry, our local revenue in January. We receive a bulk of it in February. So if there is a delay in receiving that money, it could put us in a position that is rather precarious. Our monthly expenses in 22 are basically $4.5 million. So there's a little bit of a timing there. I think it's still doable. It's something that we want to have much more conversations on. But I think this is an important piece to always look at. Although we have a cash balance, it is important that we maintain a cash balance. We cannot go into a position where we're unable to pay payroll. 85% of our budget is salaries and benefits. And so that is very predictable when we're looking at our expenses. So the last slide that I have here before we just look at some conclusions is basically where we were in 2019 and where we are for our projected years. This does show the total revenue versus total expenditures versus our cash balance. So you can see in fiscal year 23, we do go slightly negative in total cash. And just as a reminder, this is inclusive of $2.7 million in budget cuts or budget movement from the failed levy in November, roughly $2 million in the March levy failure, the 3% commitment from the Board of Education and no increased revenue. So you can see where we start to see some of the concerns on the budget side. So lastly, I just wanted to leave everyone with just the understanding that the district has made significant decreases in current projected expenditures. As we looked at, it was $21 million in savings on the expense side over the five years of the forecast. We did see an unexpected loss of revenue from the state. And these are unprecedented times when we're looking at school funding, decrease of total revenue by just over $3 million over the forecast. And that healthy cash balances within the district are absolutely crucial and necessary for the district to maintain our district obligations. So I will stop sharing here. I'm sure there's gonna be questions on it. I can share it again if that's necessary. But again, if you have any more questions or want to dive more deeply into the forecast, the assumptions page is currently on board docs and it will be supplied to the Ohio Department of Education after today.
Kevin, a couple of things to start with. One, thank you for doing this. As disturbing as it is and it should be to everybody that's seeing it right now, it's truly nice to tell them the whole story. I'm afraid that the story could be far worse than this. And I say that because I'm concerned about, you know, broad economic pressures that are on the community, the state, the country, the world, et cetera, right? So there are significant unknowns in front of us. And you know, what we've got here with all the work that's been done up to this point, with all the work that's been done up to this point, in any given year, we're kind of overspending the revenue that we can sort of count on at the moment. That's about the only thing that we can count on by, you know, 6%, 7% or so. And that's math that just doesn't work. I mean, this is a totally unsustainable picture. And we have a limited amount of time to solve for it somehow. Again, the big variable in my mind is the public's ability to help us doing, I'm sorry, help us do what we're trying to do here. Because we're gonna run out of money soon and we don't have a lot of opportunities to go ask for money. And you know, once we spend a dollar, we can't get that dollar back. And we don't know what tomorrow brings. So I think that we have to be incredibly conservative in the way we spend money at the moment until we can figure out a game plan here. You know, the worry that I've got is, okay, so we had two levies that we weren't successful with. My feeling by, from talking to a number of people in the community is that they kind of get the fact that the school system needs some money to keep going. The window to ask them for that, I don't know. I don't know if we're out of that window right now. I hope we're not because solving this problem could be quite painful. And we don't have a choice but to solve. So you know, I will say that, you know, the good news is that we do have some cash surplus here and cash is time. Not an enormous amount of time, but it is some time for us to work scenarios that are, try to quantify the sensitivities, the bets that we're gonna have to make on how to manage the situation. The other good thing, and I mentioned it earlier in the meeting, that John took me on a tour of the buildings the other day. And I will give a lot of credit to John and the district for being what I call excellent stewards of the buildings that we have. We have a bunch of old buildings, but they are really well cared for. And push comes to shove, we can sure live with them for a while. It's, I don't think it's an emergency to solve that. Something that eventually we're gonna want to do something about, but we don't have that particular burden on top of meeting operating expenses right now. Although I do worry that, you know, as these buildings continue to age, they do cost more to maintain and, you know, whether we really, you know, have adequately forecasted, if you will, what it takes to keep them going and comfortable and safe and all those things. So I for one am gonna be, I don't know, what would be the right word? I'm gonna be pretty miserly about dollars because these are all the dollars that we know that we have until we know with some reasonable certainty that there's a plan to work better arithmetic than what we're looking at right now. Again, I'm not being critical of, I think you've done fabulous work here. Now, how hard you're working on all this? It's just a real-life situation and we've got to figure this one out.
Yeah, I agree with you. I mean, so like when you look at, so for those who aren't necessarily familiar with school funding, running a deficit is not necessarily out of the ordinary. Kind of what you talked about, Kevin, when you look at the forecasted years of roughly 6% or 7% expenses over revenue. Well, the previous four years were roughly 6% to 7% above revenue. So revenue was higher than expenses in those years. Typically, what you see, and many people have seen me do the picture and Dr. Kraus will make fun of me for it, but doing the stair-step model where, you know, basically revenue is flat. And then what we're seeing is, you know, you're trying, what you're trying in many ways is you're trying to soften the expense curve. There's not a whole lot that we can do on the revenue side besides coming to the local community and asking for them to support the district. We can do as much as we can on the expense side. What you're really looking at too is some of the bigger challenges as a circus organization. 85% of our costs are wrapped up in people. And that's what we want to do. We want to serve people and that's what our purpose is. And those are typically our highest appreciating line items as well. And so like, and I know that we have discussed it. So currently, one of the forecasts and estimates that we utilize on the benefit side is we're looking at healthcare increases of 9%. That is, we're involved in an insurance consortium. So what we utilize currently is what the actuary utilizes in our insurance consortium. So that's a 9%. If you look at many of the districts around here and you look at the districts within the insurance consortium, they're looking at something similar, 8%, 7%, 8%, 9% as to what their forecasted assumptions are. We had the benefit of this year of having a 4% increase. They're going into next year, we're factoring in a 4% increase on the benefit side. So any decrease is something that we're able to capture those savings on. The concerns that a lot of districts I know have, especially in the last couple of years, is that increase. We saw a insurance consortium which had roughly 100, 150 districts in it had an increase of 17 or 26%. So it wasn't 17 to 26. You either got 17 or 26% increase in one year. And how devastating that was to some districts' budgets.
My bet is that there's an enormous number of people in the district that aren't aware of the way schools are actually funded and the way levies work and things of that nature. This is a pretty unique thing. I mean, you know, in the world of business, it's kind of strange ways to, I don't know, generate revenue, et cetera, et cetera. You put a levy out there and you basically bank money for a while while you're spending into it. Once you understand that, you know that a levy only lasts for a certain amount of time. Because if, you know, in the real world, if you are not doing anything different, you've got at least basic rates of inflation to contend with, right? And we certainly have many more dynamics at play here. So, but again, I'll just, you know, I'll tell you, in my experience, there's there's a million stories. I mean, they're all honest and they're all real and they all feel unavoidable. But also what's unavoidable is when the checking account empties out to zero and you can't pay people and you can't do things anymore, et cetera. So we have a very, I mean, this, you and I have had this conversation before. So I know I'm not telling you anything new here, but for the rest of us, for the public, we're not in an emergency today, but it's not that far off into not in an emergency today, but it's not that far off into the future. And we are going to have to do a series of things to, to, to get this thing to, to balance. And that means we're going to spend differently. It means that hopefully at a point in, in, in time, the, the public will understand the situation and be of a consensus to, to help solve it with rational levies that, you know, at least they can tolerate. I'm deeply worried about that. I'm, I'm so worried about the uncertainty in, in families across the district right now and their, their willingness and their ability, even if they, even if they get all of this, you know, can they get themselves to the point to reach deeper and, and help solve this when you realize that the financial demographics of the, of, of the district is varied and the demographics in general are varied. There's a lot of families that, that don't have students that are serviced by the district, et cetera, et cetera. So a lot of different things go along everybody's minds. And, and I think we, you know, we have an obligation to what I call, you know, kind of game this out. And what I mean by that is to run scenarios. What if this happens? What if that happens? What if we do this? What if we do that? And, and, and have a range of, excuse me, potential scenarios that we can feel comfortable with and we are able to have a robust, open, intensive dialogue with the community and all come to some consensus at a reasonable point in the, in the not-too-distant future.
I agree.
Thanks. Other, other comments? Other questions for Kevin?
Kevin?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to ask, you, early on, we were talking about the state budget cuts that are affecting all K through twelve buildings. I mean, you said Loveland is affected more than other districts. Can you talk about, I know it's not your decision, but can you talk a little bit more about why that is the case?
Sure. Yeah, so, so there's a lot of different reasons as to what the district looked, or what the state looked at. So one thing that, when, when you're looking at every district in the state of Ohio, there's a lot of different ways when you're looking at state funding. So there's something called a cap. So a cap district is a district that basically doesn't receive any more money than what they received last year. Or you have a guaranteed district that doesn't, doesn't receive any less money than what they received the year before. And then you have people in between. And if you're in between, you're what's called on the formula. The goal of this state really is to get more people on the formula where you're being funded based on your actual enrollment. Most districts are actually on a cap or the guarantee. So there's only, there's, there's roughly six hundred to ten, six hundred and twelve school districts in the state of Ohio, based on whichever ODE report you look at. And roughly about a hundred of them are in between either a cap or a guarantee. Most districts, if you like it percentage wise, are, are guaranteed district and that's where we are. We're a guaranteed district. But the way that they determine all that is something called state share index. They look at, look at a lot of different things within the state. It's, it could be a valuation, average valuation of homes in the district. It could be income related. They basically were trying to figure out a way to make state funding equitable. And, you know, many people may not know this, but when you look at Loveland, Loveland, and this isn't determining your own personal case with it, but from the state of Ohio standpoint, the state of Ohio looks at Loveland as a wealthy district. So if you look at median income, Loveland is the twenty-seventh highest out of six hundred and ten school districts in the state of Ohio. And so disproportionately, when you look at state budget cuts or how the state typically funds schools, it's going to impact a district like Loveland more than others. We were not affected quite as much as some of our neighbors, but I can tell you, there's a district that I do know of that basically has the same state funding allocation that we do. It's almost the exact same dollar amount. It's, it's definitely a far greater proportion of their total budget because of the demographics in the districts and the state funds them more. But Loveland lost a million dollars in state funding for this year and that district lost a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. So there is disparity within the state of Ohio. We lost just over eight percent as compared to some districts. There are districts in the state of Ohio that did lose almost fifty percent of their state funding. Those districts don't necessarily receive a lot of state funding in total, as you can imagine, but that, that definitely hurts when you are anticipating that, that funding to be coming in. So it's.
Can I interrupt for one second?
Please.
Because of our, our participation in the alliance, which is our advocacy group that represents school districts more similar to us with these funding issues, has been working with the treasurers and the superintendents in districts like ours to, to push back on legislature legislators on this particular issue about being disproportionately affected and in general. So we, it's not a matter of just sitting back and taking it. It is, we have certainly aligned ourselves with other school districts in a similar position with an advocacy group to try to change legislation around that.
Yeah, and so, and even what I say in this particular case, it's not, it's not fraught with feelings or, or things like that. It's just the fact that typically in the state of Ohio, what you see is the state typically funding lower poverty or districts similar to that, much higher. So, I mean, just even a little background, I was in a district that had very high poverty six years ago and they had a substantial amount of increased state funding to the district. And that's not something that Loveland was able to, to be a part of. So it just looks very different across the state of Ohio. That answer your question, Matthew?
Any other questions?
I have just a little bit of, and more of a, a way that we need to think about this and, and I want to highlight a couple of the numbers that Kevin gave us. If I remember correctly, about sixty percent of our funding, Kevin, is locally raised by property taxes. About eighty-five percent of our expenses are personnel. And we're right now on the tail end of a levy where we're in deficit spending to two to six to seven percent per year. And we'll, based on your projection, that we currently have run out of money in January or February of 2022, which is only, you know, a, a year and a half cycle away from now. Is that a pretty good summary of what you've shown us?
Yes. Yeah, the only thing I have to say about January twenty-two is it's, it's getting close to that. I don't necessarily think it's impossible to get over that bridge, but it's, 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 it's getting fairly close.
Well, and, and the way, and, and not to belabor the point, but, you know, there's only two ways through that. One is to make our expenses less and one is to increase our revenues. And the community has recently told us that they're not ready to increase our revenues. So it's our job as a board and as a school district to get the message out about why these things are important, how great our love of schools, what opportunities do we offer the children in order to make them productive members of our society in the future? And how low can we cut our budget before we start taking away opportunities that will forever change their ability to be educated? That's more for us to all think about, you know, where do we cut and how do we come back and ask for money? I'm looking forward to the challenge.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to, to even bring up, if you think about what we've done so far and, and I, I'm not sure how the community looks at it. I know within the district and out with the board, we definitely look like we have made, or we definitely feel like we've made some significant cuts in the budget on revenue and an expense side. And I know, I know it's not, you know, lateral that you just look at expenses, you just look at revenue, it's, it's really a body of work. But if you look at what has accomplished so far in the district, basically four point seven million dollars to the positive, our current expenses over revenue is roughly three point seven million. So in order to get to basically flatlining that, if you're just talking about an expense side, you'd have to do almost eighty percent of what we just did, which, you know, Amy could speak to this far more, I'm, I'm just the numbers guy, but I think would have a significant impact on how we do business and what we provide to our students.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on the five-year forecast presentation?
Just one question for Kevin. What's the impact of us not approving the forecast?
Yeah, so the, the state of Ohio does require a forecast to be done in May, so it does need to be submitted by tomorrow. Obviously, we didn't anticipate all the things that were happening with state budgeting, but at the same time, it did help to be able to get as much clarification as possible. Although it is approved twice a year, it can be updated and resubmitted and that's what we did in, in February. So we made significant changes, we updated and we resubmitted. So we would, I mean, to answer you really briefly, we would be non-compliant if we don't approve a forecast today.
And the deadline is now?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, anything else? All right, then, what we would do is move into the treasurer's resolutions. Included in those resolutions is that five-year forecast that we've been talking about, but there are also items of one board meeting minutes, the regular monthly financial reports, transfer from the, the general fund to the turf field replacement and contracts with Hamilton County and Warren County Educational Service Centers. So those are the treasurer's items. There would be one motion to approve those items, nine point one through nine point six. Is there a motion to that effect? I see Washburn making the motion. Is there a second? I see Ms. Pettit making a second. As we talk about those items, first I'll ask Kevin, is there, do you have a report on any of the items? I'm assuming that your five-year forecast report is, that, that's completed for that portion, but do you have a report on any of the other items that are in your agenda?
Well, I'd be happy to go through them, especially with Kevin and Eric being on board here, just to give them more familiarity as we go through it. So nine point one is our approval of our Board of Education minutes. So just like today, we have an agenda, I keep the minutes. One piece of my job that people aren't necessarily familiar with is I'm the recorder for the Board of Education. So if I am actually not here, you have to vote somebody in as treasurer. You can all fight for that at a future date potentially. So it's just approving what we did and making sure that the minutes are correct. Nine point two is the five-year forecast, we'll skip, skip over that for right now. Nine point three are our financial reports, our invoices, transfers, investment of funds that we give on a regular basis. The financial packet that is in there is something that I put together manually. It's up to date through April. It's actually very reflective of what's in there is what's called the SM2M. SM2M is up-to-date information as well. What I try to provide to you is a lot more detailed data as to cash flows, how we are currently hitting our budgets. What you'll see in there right now is a budget from February, so it's not reflective of this current forecast. And if we do approve the forecast, that, that will be changed for the next, the next meeting. Our red sum is just basically revenue within the district. Our check register are all the checks that were actually cut for just that month. And the check pay are our current outstanding checks, so checks that have not been cashed at this point. Again, the SM2M is up-to-date information data for the general fund and it looks very similar to what the five-year forecast looks like. And what we call a fin sum or financial summary is all the funds within the district. So our general fund is our main fund, which is funded by mainly tax dollars and also tax dollars through the state. But it also shows other funds like our bond retirement fund, our permanent improvement fund, our activity funds, our athletic funds. So there's far more funds in the district than just the general fund. Nine point four is the approval of the transfer, transfer from our general fund to turf field replacement fund. So this has been occurring prior to my time in the district. I don't, I don't recall the exact date as to when the football field was turfed, so it is not, it is not grass, it's what people might call gurf. And we don't offend anybody who's in the business by saying that. But basically what we do on a regular basis, on an annual basis, is transfer money towards the eventual, eventual replacement. John could speak more to the upkeep on a regular basis and what current warranties we have on the field, but that twenty thousand dollars is only specifically for the replacement when the life of the turf is, is, is done.
I, I could add at this point, so it's clear that money is because when the field was turfed, then it was determined that since we would not be maintaining a regular earth field, we did not have the expenses of the lining, of the replacing of sod, all of those kinds of things. And so in order to plan for the eventual replacement of the turf, we determined the amount of money that each year would be put into the turf fund that would have been spent on maintenance of a typical kind of field. That way we didn't come to a point when the turf field needed to be replaced and we had to come up with that money.
Thank you, Kevin. So nine point five and nine point six are approval contracts with Hamilton County ESC and Warren County ESC. If you're, if you haven't really been in the school world, you may not necessarily be familiar with ESCs, they're educational service centers. Typically, they are county-based. In many ways, they kind of work like a private industry, even though they're in the public setting. So I actually started my career at Warren County ESC. What they do is they provide services, typically special education services to the district. And Eric, are you still on the call here? Maybe this would be a good time just to kind of give a little bit of outline of what those are.
Sure, I can speak to that specifically. ESCs were established several decades ago initially to allow local school districts to pool resources for services that typically would be very expensive if trying to do them individually. So there are, there are multiple benefits financially for partnering with ESCs for those types of services in addition to some other benefits that we would receive for being able to do so. You know, for example, with many low incidence needs that don't typically appear in very many students, for example, hearing disabilities, disabilities regarding vision, those sorts of services, it would be very expensive for you to hire your own audiologist, your own teacher of the visually impaired or hearing impaired. What you could do is partner through media, see the person of, purchase a portion of that service at a much reduced cost. So we partner for those types of reasons when we have the need for services that we don't require full people for, which would be almost impossible to be able to purchase. Additionally, partnering allows us to participate in consortiums where we share resources and share access to professional development or, or cutting-edge types of services. For example, we partner as a community for assisted technology support for students who might need evaluations or support for school teams in how to utilize communication devices for students who are verbal, as an example. We partner with a consortium for English as a second language to have access to research and guidance and how to best support those students. I think you can fix that a little bit as a DSO teacher. We also partner for a cutting-edge guidance and professional development for preschool programming, which is a very compliant. which is a very, um, compliance-based endeavor where you have to achieve not only rules through the Ohio Department of Education, but also through, um, jobs and family services. So there's, there's a need to have somebody who specializes in those types of things. Um, some additional reasons why we go through, uh, ESCs, um, it allows us to not only attain highly qualified or highly skilled individuals in areas such as hearing, vision, audiology, speech language pathology, occupational and physical therapy, but it allows us to do so in a way that's very flexible. Um, so if our needs change during the course of the school year, we can quickly add additional supports through that consortium model. So if I need one additional day of occupational therapy tomorrow, I can get that versus having to go out and trying to hire somebody for one day, which is almost impossible. Um, additionally, we have access to supervision and professional development through skilled individuals in those specialties. Um, as an example, I'm a school psychologist, but I'm not the most skilled to be able to evaluate what good communication or, um, OTPT services might be. So having access to somebody that can help us is really important. Um, and then finally, the long-term cost savings that we achieve by, um, working through ESCs at that age and work their way up in our pay scales would become much more expensive, um, versus working with ESCs. We have some flexibility to house off that back. Um, so the types of services that you see largely in those contracts are those types of services. Um, additionally, there are those occasional students who might need a specialized program that we cannot offer in a local school district. Um, for example, a separate school that would provide highly skilled and specialized services for students with autism and social communication needs, or schools for students who need very structured behavioral medical health support that we can't effectively and reasonably do within a regular school contract. Um, and that's something, um, I've had them spoke to working with the ESC. I had one, been a principal for one of those types of schools. Um, so I saw the benefit of being able to pool at school districts to support that environment, um, where we couldn't necessarily have a whole separate program for one or two students of our own. But then, uh, so those are really the, the, the reasons why we go through ESCs, um, for, for all of those different proponents, the cost savings, the skill, the flexibility, um, and the ability to provide structured supervision and support so sure that we're really getting effective services for our students.
Eric, can I ask a question? Um, we have facts coming up with Hamilton County and Warren County. Is Claremont County not part of that? Does that come up at a different time?
Um, Claremont County, the last we, um, partnered with them was probably four, maybe five years ago. I had some interpreter services, um, for a high school student to, um, with that, so we had an interpreter with her. Um, it just depends on the student needs that present themselves and the ability of each of those service entities to meet those needs. Um, we partner with Hamilton County as our primary service provider. Um, but we have access to all of the ESCs, even beyond Claremont County. Um, it depends on who provides the most effective service for the best cost. But then you also have to consider having staff that have been with students and teens for several years, knowing those students, knowing those families, knowing the need, that they're replaceable. So I can't necessarily move all of my OTs and PT to, from Warren County to Hamilton County, because the devastating impact that would have upon student support would be insurmountable. Um, you would not be able to replace the student knowledge and the institutional knowledge that those providers have. So we're sort of entrenched in the relationships we have for the different types of services, but occasionally, you do have a unique service that comes up that Claremont County might be able to provide, um, that wouldn't impact some of that student and service knowledge that we have internally.
Yeah, and one, one piece I just wanted to point out as well, um, so, so through the, the levy process, and especially after the November levy, uh, we were going to reduce our Hamilton County ESC contract by roughly under seventy-two thousand dollars. And, uh, just wanted to make it really clear that although we are, uh, we are renewing this contract, it has decreased substantially and has increased more than a hundred seventy-two thousand dollars. So, um, just so there's not any confusion if somebody sees this contract and thinking that we're doing something that we had said we were not going to do. We did fulfill our obligations on cutting costs with Hamilton County ESC.
And, and those were largely from the general curricular side, um, that that was necessary, the special education side. Um, ESCs actually operate sort of on multiple platforms. Um, one being typically special education, which is where the initial model for ESCs came from. Uh, but then there's also that curricular and educational administration side as well. Um, so most of the cuts that we had promised and, um, fulfilled were from that curricular side. Um, not necessarily the special education side, which, which we wouldn't be able to, to do without those services.
I think you have a very difficult set of challenges there. These are the most vulnerable, uh, and it's a very sensitive subject.
Um, we, we do have ways that we as well help support the cost of those services. Um, we do receive some federal funding, although it's probably only about ten percent of the total cost, um, for those services. Most of the funding comes locally. Um, there's also avenues by which we can recoup some fund through Medicaid dealing, uh, through the Ohio Medicaid, the school Medicaid program, Medicaid school program, those. Um, as well as a unique legislative process that we refer to as catastrophic cost for students who cost, um, an excessive amount to be able to educate, we can recoup a part of that back. Um, and then as well, when we have students who are fostered by to us, we can build back to their district of residence for some of those services. So we try the best we can to pool and recoup some of that cost.
Yeah, it'd be a subject for another day, but I, I, I think everybody knows that, uh, my wife and I are heavily involved with, um, trying to help kids on the spectrum when they're done with high school and they're in college. And, uh, you know, we witnessed, um, uh, the challenge that, that, that young people are coming out of high school with nevertheless, right? Uh, so it, it's a, it's a very important, um, area. Again, subject for an, another discussion. I, I, I don't have any issue with what's going on with this right now.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? If not, I think we might be ready for a vote on those treasurer items. Is that correct, Ms. Wylie?
That's correct.
Okay, can we have a vote?
Uh, Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
I'm gonna vote no, um, and it's only because of the five-year forecast being bundled in here. Uh, I'm, I'm fine with the rest of it. Uh, if for some reason, uh, the motion fails because of that vote, uh, maybe there's something that, that we could do to unbundle and, and get the rest of them moving. But, uh, my issue is not about the one-year forecast or the eighteen-month forecast. It's about the five-year forecast. Uh, and, uh, I, I just have a great deal of difficulty, saying that that's the future. That, because it won't be the future. I don't, I, I don't see how it can be the future. So I'll leave it there and see where the vote turns out.
And Dr. Lamarrs?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Dr. Swisher?
Um, I have one other thing to add. Did we actually move, move to, to make this vote?
Yeah, the, the move was, was before it started talking.
It sounds good. Um, I, I share Kevin's concerns. Um, I have a slightly different opinion in that. I, I believe that a budget forecast is a budget forecast, and I, I think all of us know that things will be changing over time. Um, I feel comfortable voting yes with us.
Okay, um, motion carried. Um, we then move from there to the items under the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Um, and so there are two items there. Um, I will ask Ms. Wiley if she has any additional report. She has provided a report to the board in, uh, board docs, but do you have anything to add to that report, Ms. Wiley?
Um, I do have a couple additions to the agenda that are highlighted in the administrative content of, of the agenda in yellow. So we had, um, a few things come up as the agenda went live to you the other day, and that was the addition of, um, uh, some credit recovery for, um, Drew's Mitchell to, uh, do summer school. There was also an additional football coach and, um, some stipends from Miami University that came through for cooperating teachers that, um, housed our, uh, student teachers through Miami University. So, um, those were additions. Are there any specific questions about any of the items in? Yes, go ahead, Michelle.
Are we still, uh, sticking with the policy that, um, our coaches should be four years out of school?
That's been practiced, not policy, is my understanding. However, that is a good question. I don't know the ages of the coaches. I relied on the athletic director's recommendation. So I can check with him.
You probably should check.
Okay, I will do that.
Um, I would just like to, um, make a point of information that, um, maybe nobody remembers except me. Within this, um, within this set of recommendations that we will have a motion on soon, uh, is included the renewal of administrative staff for the twenty twenty-one school year. And so we have the different, there are some changes in administrative assignments, but there are also contracts for administrators who are staying in their current positions. Um, and I believe that normally at this time, we would also have, um, because our administrator, our administrator handbook includes our salary schedule and would include any adjustments to that salary schedule by a vote by the board. Um, I just want to make sure it's not here in this. Um, and so I wanted to ask you to comment on that, that there is no, um, change to the administrative contract.
I was correct. Normally, at this time, um, you would have gotten a revision from the handbook. That would include a recommendation for salary increases on a percentage basis, um, and we did not bring that forward to you.
But like in the final initial stand, um, situation we were in, that the board needed to review that, and given the change in the board, we wanted that to pause.
So the, the board, if I'm understanding correctly, the board could consider that and could ask for, um, review of the administrator handbook and, uh, make changes. But voting on this issue tonight, voting on these administrative recommendations for personnel would mean that there are no increases to administrator, uh, salaries. Their contracts are being approved, but there are no in- increases in salary, um, with the exception of those who might be moving to a different administrative position. But those who are simply having contracts renewed are not experiencing any change, uh, any, uh, percentage increase.
Yes, that was correct.
Can I clarify a point there? If I was to look at, um, the, the ten dot one attachment, um, do we know what the net cost, uh, differential is of this packet? Is it, uh, neutral, uh, or positive or negative? Do we know?
As an entire package, uh, because that, that doesn't, it, um, well, as an entire package, there would be, I would say it would be an increase, and Kevin would definitely be able to speak to that better. But the, um, teacher's contract is in the middle of a negotiated agreement that has a two percent increase in salary for this coming year.
Now we're good with gas. Here we are.